For the presentation of the 2024 Chelsea City Council and Chelsea School Committee. Please be seated.
Please stay standing at this time. I'd like to call upon Janice Singer to lead us in the National Anthem. Once the National Anthem is sung, stay standing and we'll do the pledge allegiance to the flag. Honor God, preach it.
Oh, say, can you see? By the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does the star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
I'll do the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor God, dismissed. Honor God for word. Please be seated. I'll ask the clerk to the city council to call the members.
Counselor Tesh. Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Vega. Counselor Tenary Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Stanagat.
Here.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Present.
Counselor De Jesus.
Present.
Counselor Brown.
Present.
Counselor Recupero. Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Present.
And Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Eleven members present. You have a quorum. Dear honorable members of the city council, please be advised that Leo Robinson, senior member of the Chelsea City Council, has called a special meeting for Tuesday, January 2nd at 7:00 PM to conduct elections for the offices of Vice President and Delegate to the School Committee and the swearing-in of the members of the Chelsea School Committee and City Manager Fidel Maltese.
Chair recognizes Counsel Brown.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to accept the call of this meeting tonight.
Seeing no objections, so moved. And at this time, we'd call on the city clerk to administer the oath to the city council. Can I ask everybody, please stand, raise your right hand.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your names. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As a city councillor.
As a city councillor.
For the city of Chelsea.
For the city of Chelsea.
According to the best.
According to the best.
Of my abilities.
Of my abilities.
In understanding.
In understanding.
Agreeably.
Agreeably.
To the rules and regulations.
To the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
The city of Chelsea.
The city of Chelsea.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Councilors, go take your seats. I do have a few remarks this evening. Good evening, everyone. Tonight is a very special evening as the members of the Chelsea City Council and School Committee, along with the city manager, are sworn in. Let me take a moment to kick off the 400th anniversary of the founding of Chelsea as a settlement in acknowledging how far we have grown since Samuel Maverick settled in what was then known as the Winter Summit. We have always been known as a city of new residents and we have also produced our share of famous names. Chick Correa, 25 Grammy Award winner. Barbara Stanwyck, a famous actress who went by the name Rudy Stevens while living in Chelsea. Louis Meyer, one of thousands of immigrants who came to Chelsea, ultimately making a small fortune in the rag trade before becoming famous as the film tycoon Metro Goldin Meyer. We would have no lights or phones without the contributions of Louis Latimer. And we can't forget the former heavyweight champ of the world, Chelsea's own John Ruiz. As I prepared to hand the gravel to the council's next president, I look back at my own tenure as council president, which included a strong focus on public safety and ensuring basic city services for residents. I've greatly enjoyed serving as your council president, though not without challenges. It has been a tremendous honor and privilege to serve. During those challenging times, I tried my best to provide the best leadership possible to both my colleagues on the city council and the residents of Chelsea. People who call Chelsea home deserve a city government that works for them and that is what I strove for. The body have caused many residents to lose faith in the city government and confidence in the city council itself. I believe we owe it to the residents of Chelsea to put forth our best and most ethical leadership and we did not always rise to the occasion. But I believe this body will be able to regain the trust and respect of the people we represent. That will require a willingness for the members of the city council to come to City Hall and work hard to treat each other with respect, to focus on quality of life issues and to refrain from personal attacks and conflicts. Our priority must bring the council together and bring the residents of Chelsea together. I am happy with what was accomplished during my tenure as president. I deeply love Chelsea and strive to provide the best leadership and representation I can. As a former Chelsea athlete and coach, I end my comments this evening by quoting New England Patriots coach Bill Belichick, "Do your job." And at this time, I'll take nominations from the floor for the president. Chair recognizes Counselor Taylor.
I'd like to nominate Norielis De Jesus as president of the city council.
Who's the second?
Mr. President, if there's no other nominations.
Counselor Recupero.
Second.
Second. Seeing no other nominations, we'll close that portion of the meeting.
Close for presidency?
Yes. Clerk will call a roll by name.
When your name is called, please state the name of the counselor you are supporting for council president for 2024. Counselor Tesh. Counselor Taylor.
Counselor De Jesus.
Counselor Vega.
Counselor Norielis De Jesus.
Counselor Tenary Garcia.
Counselor Norielis De Jesus.
Counselor Stanagat.
Counselor Norielis De Jesus.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Counselor Norielis De Jesus.
Counselor De Jesus.
Present.
Present.
Counselor Brown.
Counselor De Jesus.
Counselor Recupero. Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Counselor Norielis De Jesus.
And Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Norielis De Jesus.
With ten members voting in favor and one voting president, Counselor Norielis De Jesus has been elected president of the city council.
At this time, I'd ask for Ms. Stanagat and Roberto to escort the new president to the podium. This way.
At this moment, I would like to hand over to our Counselor Robinson a gift from the city of Chelsea.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye. Norielis De Jesus.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As the president.
As the president.
Of the city council.
Of the city council.
According to the best.
According to the best.
Of my abilities.
Of my abilities.
In understanding.
In understanding.
Agreeably.
Agreeably.
To the rules and regulations.
To the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the city of Chelsea.
Of the city of Chelsea.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, before proceeding, want to briefly thank Counselor Robinson for his leadership in this past year. I will now open nominations for vice president. I nominate Counselor Todd Taylor.
Do I hear a second? Counselor Recupero, seconds. We will now close nominations and I will call on the council clerk for a roll call.
When your name is called, please state the name of the counselor you're supporting for vice president. Counselor Tesh.
Counselor Todd Taylor.
Counselor Taylor.
Present.
Counselor Vega.
Taylor.
Counselor Tenary Garcia.
Counselor Todd Taylor.
Counselor Stanagat.
Counselor Todd Taylor.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Counselor Todd Taylor.
Counselor De Jesus.
Counselor Todd Taylor.
Counselor Brown.
Counselor Taylor.
Counselor Recupero. Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Counselor Todd Taylor.
And Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Todd Taylor.
With ten members voting in favor, one voting president, Counselor Todd Taylor has been elected vice president.
Congratulations, Counselor. I will now ask our Counselor Teshi and Counselor Recupero to escort Counselor Taylor to the podium.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye. Todd Taylor.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As vice president.
As vice president.
Of the city council.
Of the city council.
According to the best.
According to the best.
Of my abilities.
Of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably.
Agreeably.
To the rules and regulations.
To the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the city of Chelsea.
Of the city of Chelsea.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Moving on to next business, I will now open nominations for Delegate to the School Committee. Do I hear any nominations on the floor?
Oh, nominate Counselor Kelly Garcia.
A second.
I hear a second. Hearing no other nominations, we are closing nominations. And I will ask the clerk to take roll call.
When your name is called, please state the name of the counselor you are supporting for Delegate to the School Committee. Counselor Tesh.
Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Counselor Taylor.
Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Counselor Vega.
Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Counselor Tenary Garcia.
Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Counselor Stanagat.
Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Kelly Garcia.
Counselor De Jesus.
Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Counselor Brown.
I have to say, Counselor Kelly Garcia. I can't say Garcia now because we have two, but Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Counselor Recupero. Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Present.
And Counselor Robinson.
Kelly Garcia.
Ten members voting in favor, one voting president. Kelly Garcia is delegate to the school committee for 2024.
Congratulations, Counselor. I will ask now for the Counselor Tanaydi Garcia and Counselor Brown to please escort Counselor Kelly Garcia to be sworn in. We continue with the Garcias in Chelsea City Council.
Aye.
Aye. Kelly Garcia.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all of the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As a delegate to the school committee.
As a delegate to the school committee.
According to the best.
According to the best.
Of my abilities.
Of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably.
Agreeably.
To the rules and regulations.
To the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
The laws of the Commonwealth.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the city of Chelsea.
Of the city of Chelsea.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
Moving on, Chair recognizes Counselor Stanagat.
I move that the rules and regulations for the year 2023 be the rules and regulations for the year 2024 until such time that the city council's Subcommittee on Rules and Administration meets and recommends otherwise.
Is there a second on the floor? Counselor Garcia, Kelly Garcia, a second.
Counselor Garcia, seconds, and without objection, the rules and regulations for 2024 will be as they were in 2023.
Chair recognizes Counselor Recupero.
Move that the seating arrangement for the year 2024 be as drawn during the organizational meeting held on Monday, December 18th, 2023 in the City Council Committee Room.
Is there a second? Counselor Vega, seconds.
Counselor Vega, seconds. Seating arrangement for 2024 will be as drawn during the organizational meeting.
Chair recognizes Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Madam President. I make a move that the roll call order for the year 2024, which was drawn at the organizational meeting held on Monday, December 18th, 2023 in the City Council Committee Room be accepted tonight.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Jimenez, seconds.
Counselor Jimenez, seconds. Roll call order for year 2024 will be as drawn during the organizational meeting on December 18th.
At this moment, I would like to call forward the members of the school committee to receive the oath of office from our city clerk. Come on up.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As a member.
As a member.
In the school committee.
Of the school committee.
According to the best.
According to the best.
Of my abilities.
Of my abilities.
In understanding.
In understanding.
Agreeably.
Agreeably.
To the rules and regulations.
To the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the city of Chelsea.
Of the city of Chelsea.
So help me God.
Congratulations to our newly elected school committee members. At this moment, I call forward our city manager, Fidel Maltese, to be sworn in. At this moment, I call forward our city manager, Fidel Maltese, to be sworn in.
Aye. Fidel Maltese.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As the city manager.
As the city manager.
The city of Chelsea.
For the city of Chelsea.
According to the best.
According to the best.
Of my abilities.
Of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably.
Agreeably.
To the rules and regulations.
To the rules and regulations.
Of the constitution.
Of the constitution.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
The charter.
The charter.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the city of Chelsea.
Of the city of Chelsea.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So I'm gonna go a little off script, and I'm gonna ask our new city manager to please join us for a few words.
Thank you so much for being here today. It, uh, it means the world, uh, that you are all here to me, uh, that you are all here today. It means the world to me. Good evening, honorable city council, State Senator Sal D. Dominico, State Representative Judith Garcia, Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley, distinguished guests, and all residents of Chelsea. Today, we inaugurate a new city council, a new school committee, and a new city manager. These leaders collectively represent the promise of our future and a celebration of what makes Chelsea such a special place. The weight and significance of this day is not lost on me. It is with immense pride, gratitude, and a deep sense of responsibility that I stand before you as your new city manager. I am humbled. I am humbled and honored to be the first Latino city manager in the city of Chelsea. Firstly, I want to thank the city council for placing your trust in me to serve our city and our residents. I want to acknowledge the leaders who came before us, those who paved the way and played an essential role in bringing us to where we stand today. Many of you are here today. I come from humble, humble beginnings, yet I know that my story is like the story of many of our residents. I was born in Managua, Nicaragua, when I was seven, my mother, who is with us here today. Migrated to Miami where she cleaned offices to provide for two, my two siblings and I. As a single mom, I saw how she struggled. She worked hard, yet she never gave up. I am here before you today because of her sacrifices. As I reflect on tonight, I am overwhelmed with hope. Hope as a force that inspires us to strive for a better tomorrow. Together, we will work to build a Chelsea where children's dreams take flight, where businesses flourish, where neighborhoods thrive, and where diversity is celebrated as our greatest strength. Our purpose: to build a Chelsea that is inclusive, thriving, and resilient. As we embark on this journey together, I want to reassure you of my commitment to the city of Chelsea and to our people. I will work tirelessly to ensure that voices are heard and their concerns are addressed. We will be transparent in our actions and accountable for our decisions. I want to thank my family for being here today and for their incredible support, my mother, Aurora, my sister Gabby, my brother-in-law Freddie, my niece Gabriela, my wife Maria Evelyn, and our two daughters Maya and Anna Victoria. Finally, I want to thank all of our staff, our friends, and our residents. Without your steady support, I wouldn't stand here today. In closing, let us embrace this day with a sense of optimism and determination. I am honored to serve as your city manager, and I am filled with hope for what lies ahead. Thank you, Chelsea City Council, for entrusting me with this privilege, and let us march forward, hand in hand, towards a future filled with promise and prosperity for all. May God bless you and may God bless the city of Chelsea.
Thank you, city manager, and congratulations once again. Before I end with my remarks, I also want to thank all of our honorable federal and state delegation that is with us this evening for joining us and also for, uh, I want to thank all of our former, uh, uh, Chelsea city elected officials. Uh, this evening, my village is also here with me. Aquí tengo a mi hermanas. I have my sisters here, my aunts, my uncles, my cousins, my mom, my mamá, my babies, and my fiance. Thank you all. I love you dearly. I want to start by thanking my colleagues for trusting me in this new role. And a huge thank you to our city manager, city clerk Clifford Cunningham. For all you do behind the scenes, I look forward to working closely with you, Cliff. When I first started this journey, I didn't expect to be standing here as city council president. I was raised in Chelsea by strong women committed to public service. My mother worked in the medical field while my grandmother dedicated her life to public education. I ended up following in the same footsteps, dedicating the last eighteen years of my life to community organizing. Prior to stepping into public service, like many others in my community, as a young person being raised by a single parent, I began to stray. My mother, who at the time worked two jobs with tough love, forced me to attend school outside of Chelsea. Stepping out of Chelsea and looking at Chelsea from the outside, I saw the inequities, I saw the gaps, the challenges and the barriers that our families had been facing all along. Because I was surrounded by so much love and support, I had not been able to recognize the poverty that I had been being raised in myself. But being outside of Chelsea allowed me to see and understand things differently. As time passed, my mother continued to take necessary measures to get me back on track. She began pushing me to start working and forced me to attend an interview at La Colaborativa. Now, without a choice, at fourteen, I began working a job that I acquired against my will. I had walked into that interview not knowing my fate had already been decided. Still rebellious, the more I fought to get fired, the more responsibilities I got from Gladys Vega. Clearly with time, the work grew on me, and I realized that this job was exactly what I needed to fuel my anger and frustrations with the world into something positive. At twenty, I became a mom. And by twenty-one, like many others in my community, I was a young single mom of two, my beautiful babies, Nalia and Jordan. Now trying to figure out what I would do next, I returned to La Colaborativa. Not only did they welcome me back, but they even established a nursery so that my babies could be taken care of while I discovered who I was going to be. It's that level of community and love that I've received that uncovered a level of strength within me that I didn't even know existed. I immediately knew that I wanted to stay and grow within this space, among the community that raised me, empowering others and bringing about systemic change. With time, life continued to bring on new challenges, and I continued to fight through them all, especially after becoming a mom. That itself unlocked yet another level of strength in me. My path then intersected with Robert, my fiance, who at the time was also a single parent raising a beautiful baby girl. As some of you know, the level of commitment it takes when you commit to a life of community service can make it difficult to find a partner that understands. Robert not only understood, but he fell in love with the movement too. Together, we created something beautiful at home, a blended family with a system of love and care that has kept me sane through the craziest of times. He has always encouraged me to push past the limit, so much so that he had been encouraging me to run for office long before I made my decision in 2021. My decision to run, however, was not an easy one. I was in love with the organizing world, and I couldn't see how these two worlds can combine. Ultimately, when COVID hit and exposed many imperfections, I knew that I had to make a decision. And what I wanted most for Chelsea was a counselor who could understand the struggles of our families as a renter, as a single parent, as a family battling substance abuse, as a blended family or a lost teen. In November of 2021, I was elected as counselor for District Three. Shortly after Election Day, I gave birth to my beautiful baby girl, Dream, a now-two-year-old charismatic little girl who spent most of her nine months in the womb listening to her mama knock on doors and run a grassroots campaign. A campaign that allowed my De Jesus family to show up with all the love and determination in the world. From door knocking to sign holding and late-night mailings, I could not have done this without you all. I'm blessed to call you familia. I have been fortunate to have the support of both family and community throughout this journey as an elected official. But my life is no stranger to struggle, and during my first year and a half of service as the District Three City Councilor, I fulfilled all my regular duties during the day and at night worked around the clock with Chelsea Police Department and navigators, fighting for my sister's life as her drug addiction consumed her. I spent most of 2022 in this routine. And through all the trials and tribulations my family and I have endured in this fight against substance abuse, today we stand strong, we stand grateful, and blessed that my sister is still with us. Often, substance abuse cases are viewed as individual situations. But like the village that raised my sister, there are so many other villages out here in Chelsea that are fighting the same battle. We all lead in different ways, and our lived experiences shape how we do it. I have never let the hard times define me or what I'm capable of. And as I fought my way through the challenges that life handed me, I managed to do some great work along the way. In 2016, I led the Community Preservation Act in the city of Chelsea, a now-established committee that pours hundreds and thousands of dollars into affordable housing, green space, and historical preservation. In 2017, I worked with statewide partners to pass a housing court expansion bill. Legislation that today provides Chelsea families facing eviction a full housing court specialist team in our very own Chelsea District Court. In 2021, Governor Baker signed into law protections for our youth against eviction records, legislation I worked on with our very own Chelsea youth. Most recently this past year, I worked closely with my statewide partners and our state senator on a bill supporting food sustainability in our community. With the Feeding Our Neighbors Coalition, we drafted a bill that incorporated both data and case examples collected from our Chelsea food pantries. And this past December, legislature approved $6 million for food sustainability, fund that will go directly to the families that are suffering from food inequity in Chelsea. With all that being said, throughout my career, there were definitely times I stood next to lawyers, politicians, educators, advocating for bills at the State House and still questioning if I had the right to be in these spaces. I didn't have a college degree, and so my education didn't come through your traditional classroom. I am a product of popular education. My classroom was the strong woman who raised me. My classroom was the nonprofit that never gave up on me. My classroom was facing all the hardships life threw at me as a single parent. My classroom was living and experiencing firsthand the fight against substance abuse and witnessing hunger in the faces of our families, witnessing housing insecurity and substandard living conditions up close and personal. My classroom has been the experience of so many in our community, including mine. I learned to turn the weaknesses into strengths and to wear those scars left behind with pride. And it's that resiliency in our Chelsea people that inspires me. Working together with my colleagues as council president is what I look forward to the most. I recognize I didn't get here alone, and while I appreciate the opportunity to stand behind this podium, this evening is not just about me. I look forward to working side by side with my colleagues, using our different strengths within each of our subcommittees to dive into conversations about the needs and priorities of our community so that we are able to make better informed decisions in this very room. I'm looking forward to working with our vice president, Counselor Taylor. Although we may not be your average team, Counselor Taylor and I have gotten some more, great work done through some difficult conversations, having one objective: the well-being and future of our city and the people we serve. I look forward to continue learning from the experiences and expertise of my senior council colleagues on the council, those who have paved the way for us today. I'm excited to enter a term with colleagues who have years of experience in the education and youth development area. I'm beyond grateful for my sisters in, in, in service who have a true sense of the pulse of our community. And as an organizer, it is always great to see my fellow sisters and brothers from the movement transition into the world of policymaking. Now, we can't talk about bridging a community together and not mention the importance of working with our faith-based allies, our local nonprofits, and the small business community. I'm excited to have those voices represented here on the council as well. We are at a pivotal time in Chelsea, embarking on the celebration of our four-hundredth anniversary and bringing in new leadership in our school committee, our city council, and a new city manager. We have seen some shifts internally and have lost some great leaders as they've moved on. Although transitions may be difficult, they are an opportunity for reflection and innovation. I look forward to working closely with all of our department heads and employees, encouraging and engaging more with their work to support and strengthen the services they provide to our community. I'm looking forward to having a strong, united city council that can lead the city in the right direction. And in this historic time where our community has a Latino city manager, I look forward to working with our new city manager to push forward all of our legislative priorities. I'm ready to get to work, and I know my colleagues are too. Thank you all for your trust in me. Let's get the work done. Gracias. Before ending, I would just like to briefly announce some of the leaders that we have in the room. As mentioned before, Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley. Representative Judith Garcia. Senator Sal D. Dominico. We also have department heads present today, Ned Keefe, deputy city manager. Almi Albeida, superintendent of Chelsea Schools. Chief Houghton, Chelsea Police Department. Chief Albanese, Chelsea Fire Department. Steve Stafford, Office of Emergency Management Director. Cheryl Watson, Fisher City Solicitor. John De Priest, Director of Permitting and Land Use. Ed Dunn, City Auditor. Jim Sullivan, Chief Assessor. Patrice Montefusco, Treasure Collector. Mike Mcateer, Director of ISD. Ramon Garcia, Chief Information Officer. Ed Els, Human Resource Director. B. Carvada, Recreational and Cultural Affairs Director. Claude Amaya, Department of Public Health. Lisa Musieron, Chelsea Public Library. Candace Perez, Diversity Equity Inclusion Officer. Francisco Toro, Director of Veteran Services. And Tracy Nowicki, Director of Department of Elder Affairs. And last but not least, I also have here former city manager Jay Ash. Former city manager Tom Embracino. Former elected official Paul Nowicki, Director of Chelsea Housing Authority. And former elected official Juan Vega. Thank you all for this evening. With no further business, this meeting is adjourned.